Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the October 20th, 2025 meeting to order. We will start with the invocation. Commissioner Charlie Hall will introduce the person doing the invocation, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance and I'll introduce the person doing the pledge. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you. Tonight, we're honored to have Chaplain Peter Dodge with the Cone Health Cancer Center at Annie Penn come and deliver our invocation. So if everyone could stand if possible and remain standing.
Would you bow your heads with me, friends? Our Heavenly Father, we stand before you this night in this place, under your care, under your protection, one liberty, one nation under God. We thank you for your protection and your blessing upon our nation. We stand here also tonight, many of us, wearing various shades of pink in our clothing because we know that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For some of us, we don't need a month to remember breast cancer because it's on our minds continually for our friends and our neighbors have been afflicted. Father, you are the God who gives strength, and we ask that you would strengthen those who are today even thick in the battle with this cancer. You are also the God of comfort, and we pray, Lord, that you would be a comfort to the families whose loved ones are battling and many of whom have seen their loved ones succumb and to go home. Father, you are also the God who gives richly and abundantly. We're thankful for the day that we live in. There is so much more today that can be done as we can detect this awful disease and we can treat it in ways that even 10 years ago were unimaginable. And so we thank you for the advancements in technology, and we look forward to the day that we can say this disease has been eradicated. Father, we also stand here tonight, the beginning of a governmental meeting, and again, we thank you for the freedoms that we have in this country. I pray that tonight your hand would be upon this meeting, that all things would go in good order, that all those who came to have their voice heard would be heard and considered, and that your peace would be upon all. This we ask in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. And next is the pledge of allegiance. Speaking with the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we have asked Ms. Sherri Hall to join us. Ms. Sherri Hall, her family is also in public service. Her son is the mayor of Eden, Neville Hall, and Ms. Sherri Hall, I believe, has rung the bell with breast cancer twice thus far, and we're honored to have you. So if everyone would please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And next, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Richardson for recognition.
Very pleased this evening to welcome all of you, but in particular, I'd like to welcome members of Boy Scout Troop 103. And I will ask you guys, if you would, members of the troop and supervisors and guidance and scout masters, all of you, if you would please stand up so that we can recognize you. These folks come from over in the Bethany area, year 158, where the charter school exists. And tonight there, I believe we're trying to earn some points towards a merit badge and look at civic activity, and I think it speaks highly of your organization, that you have that as a priority and that you took the time to go. So, thank you very much from here, Troop 103.
Thank you and welcome. Next is approval of tonight's agenda. Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for roughly a week. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of "a." Next is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda, if you have any questions about those items, I would encourage you to reach out to the county manager, Lance Metzler, or his staff, and someone would be glad to answer questions about any item on the consent agenda. With that, do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Barrow.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kellum. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of "a." Next is public comment. We do have rules related to public comment. We do have two people that signed up to speak, so if y'all would read those rules. I don't know if Lance is going to do that to Clyde.
I'll handle it. The public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to the staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson shall and will open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Citizens shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. The total amount of time allotted for public comment period is 30 minutes. Your time will be displayed on the monitor in front of you. The time clock will start with three minutes and less yielded time to six minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you are to yield your time or time is yielded to you, then please let the chairman know in advance. Speakers will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official duties. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral comments. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Ronnie Stewart.
I'll give my word to Sam Page.
Okay. Sam Page, Sheriff Sam Page.
My name is Sam Page, Sheriff of Rockingham County, my home address is 424 Dogwood Drive, Eden, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners Board and Commissioner Board, good evening. I come before you tonight to express my concerns for some of the board's lack of interest and well-being and support for my staff and deputies of the Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. Thirteen days ago, my deputies put their lives on the line to arrest a domestic violence offender that was potentially armed and dangerous, and during this event, the suspect fired multiple shots attempting to take the lives of the brave men and women who wear our badge. Ultimately, the suspect was shot and died at the scene. The female victim of domestic violence was protected in this matter by my deputies. One commissioner was caring enough to contact me and check on my deputies and the status that day. Mr. Kellum, I thank you. Some of our local first responders also contacted my office, along with members of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association and our statewide membership, and checked on the status of my deputies. What is sad that our four elected official county commissioners didn't have the courtesy to contact their sheriff for an update regarding my deputies. When I read on social media that our county board chair made a statement that he is going to fix the mess that Sheriff Sam Page has created in Rockingham County, the first thought that comes to mind is saying from Dwayne Johnson, "The Rock, you need to know your role." Mr. Chair, I've been elected for the past seven terms by good citizens to protect and serve Rockingham County, and I stand on my record of transparency.
Hold on, Sheriff. I believe there's an order of decorum that's required, subject to the Fourth Circuit. You care to weigh in, Clyde?
There is. According to our rules, you just read, any matters that are discussed that this board doesn't have jurisdiction over arguably are not appropriate for the public comment period.
If you stay within the rules, yes, sir.
You help me then if I get outside the rules. As the elected sheriff, I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and to uphold our North Carolina laws. I live by my oath, and I'll always put forth, put the citizens of Rockingham County first. In my, in my opinion, for the past two years, since the majority of folks in Rockingham County and approximately 850 people in attendance at our county commission meeting opposed a zoning decision which could have helped bring a gambling casino and electronic video gaming to our county near Camp Carefree, some of our commissioners and many of our board members had done your, your best to publicly attack myself and the sheriff's office and the jail operations by how my staff and detention officers carry out their official duties. These public attacks and misinformation efforts by the board only undermine public safety and public trust that we've worked hard to earn over the past 27 years. When you, as a board member, don't say anything positive to support our efforts to solve problems, you're instead saying something negative to our hardworking detention officers. The public attacks are merely political theater on your part, and we know it doesn't have an effect, it does have an effect on each and every one of my dedicated and professional staff at the Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. You may attack me as a sheriff, and that's okay, but every time you belittle my jail staff and deputies, we know that they are trying their best considering the shortages of manpower that we have experienced, which is partly due to non-competitive pay, benefit reductions, and very tough and dangerous working conditions that they have. We have the largest law enforcement agency in Rockingham County, and we are number three in pay. Why is that? We can drive around Rockingham County, and we can count eight, about eight to 10 different law enforcement agency vehicles parked from outside our county, and I know why, because some of our commissioners are upset with the sheriff for, for reasons, and it appears that you don't value our deputies, in my opinion. If you did, you would pay them competitively and show some appreciation for our brave deputies and detention officers that keep Rockingham County safe and our schools, churches, and communities. You talk about public safety and the cost is same. Well, yes, public safety does cost, but all of our children and families in our county are very much worth the expense for protection. In my opinion, we will only see a positive change in leadership, envision, economic and growth, when some of you on the board are no longer here. I just wonder what our county-
Stop you again. The personal attacks will not be accepted. Yeah, you need to stick to the rules.
I continue, sir.
If you can stay within the rules.
I'll do my best, sir. I just wonder that our county employees and the public that watch actions online, what they think of the disparaging remarks directed toward the sheriff's office for the past two years and ever since February, when I announced my intentions. The citizens know, my chair, Mr. Chair, when you place politics-
Again.
When we place politics over public safety, it creates a dangerous situation for our citizens because it affects everyone. How about the board trying to get back to cooperating with the sheriff and doing the good work for the people instead of hanging on to personal agendas? As county commissioners, you have your duties, and as the duly elected sheriff of Rockingham County, I have mine. I'm just asking you to know your role. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I have the floor?
Yes, sir, most definitely.
Sheriff Page, just obviously, I didn't know what you were going to say tonight, but just so you, you know, I spoke personally to each of the deputies involved with the incident that you referenced.
Tonight, I was not aware. I thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And we were given three names through the manager, and I reached out to those three as well, but I didn't reach out in a manner to get any political attention.
There's no political attention. I'm the sheriff.
No, I'm saying I didn't reach out in a manner to get political attention. I did it personally and privately because that was not a political event. That was something that certainly appreciate their efforts and what they have to deal with on a daily basis, and those events were very tragic, but trying to get attention in reaching out to them was just, to me, inappropriate. And so I reached out to them personally.
Let me just say this. I'm the sheriff. These wonderful boys, they work for me and the people of Rockingham County, and we've been nice to go to phone and call Sheriff so I can give you a little more information, and I thank you.
That's everyone that signed up for public comment, so we will move on to the next piece, which is an update on the jail inspection report.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have my jail administrator, Captain Brown, Lieutenant Stoltz. They help me to run the jail. They facilitate the operations. I'll, I'll go through the headings, and then I'll let them kind of go into detail, and then you can answer any question you may have as far as any discrepancies in regards to our last jail inspection. That'll be fine. Tonight, the first conversation is fire alarm panel. I know there were some questions on this. If you can kind of explain, Captain, about what was the status on the fire alarm panel when we were inspected, kind of what was going on with that, to the commissioners, please.
Yes. So as far as our fire alarm panel, we had notified county maintenance that there was an issue in July. They were working with a vendor to resolve the issue, and it just so happened, the day that the inspector came, they were there, the fire alarm panel, they were there to inspect the panel. So while he was doing inspection, they were inspecting the panel, he waited around, and he had to write us up for it, okay? But after he had already left, we found out that there was an issue with the panel, okay? We got a purchase order to get a new panel. We have ordered it. We're just waiting on it to come in and get it installed.
Does it say when it will be, be in?
No, sir.
Okay. The next topic was faucets loose in the dorm. Can you explain to them what that means by the faucets loose in the dorm?
Yes, sir. So in our dorm, they have, I would say, residential fixtures, and we are, we have a correctional facility with residential fixtures. They're not going to be delicate with those fixtures, okay? One fixture or two fixtures were loose, and they were fixed shortly thereafter the inspector left. Just tighten them up.
How many were loose?
Two.
Okay. No other discrepancy on that?
No.
Okay. Toilet now, now, now working in F pod, what was the status on the toilet, and what did the inspector say about that?
So we were written up for one toilet in F pod. Our maintenance man fixed the toilet before the inspector left the pod. For whatever reason, he wrote us up for it. It is what it is on that one. Can we keep going?
The, so it's one toilet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Got it fixed.
Yes, sir.
All right. Inmates hanging towels, sheets, blankets, or jumpsuits around their bunks and doors, and what protocols we've done to reduce the number of, so that, to cut back on that, and what actions can we take for disciplinary when persons do not comply?
So it used to be that we gave them two sheets, one towel, one cloth, one washcloth, and one blanket. We have to give them one sheet, one towel, one washcloth, and one blanket. So we went back to one of everything. They're deciding to tie up a sheet or tie up a blanket. We can't take it from them because we're obligated to give them to them or give it to them. So what we do now is write them up. When they have it covered up, we write them up, they don't come out and walk, and we take away privileges.
Can you give some examples?
So as I said, we write them up, they don't come out to walk. We can take their visitation. We can restrict their tablets. The only thing they can do is message me or the lieutenants or put in a sick call.
I see.
So that's tied, the light fixtures would be tied in with the-
Okay. Light fixtures covered with toothpaste, blankets, paper blankets, and also light fixtures, and what's the status on the LED replacement with the work orders?
Yes. So we have gotten, we've supplied the three quotes to upgrade to LED throughout the facility.
Why is that? Why are we doing, going to LED?
Because it's, the bulbs last longer. So we're hoping that we won't have an issue of lights being out in the pod. If you've been to our jail, you know that the ceilings inside the pods are extremely high, 20 foot, if I'm guessing. And every time we have to go in to change a light, we have to maneuver a lift inside of our Sallyport. Only one door can be opened at a time, so you have to squeeze it in and then open the door to, or close the door to open another door. And we tend to let a few lights get out before we go through the battle of getting all that work to get the lift in there for one light. And we've been written up in the past, we have a light fixture with four bulbs, just because one's out, we get written up for it. One bulb of the four, we will get written up for it.
And, and so by going to the LEDs, that should do reduce the number of light bulbs we have to be changing because we spend more burn time?
Correct.
Okay. What, um- Do it, sir.
As far as the changing of those light bulbs, when we first started looking at the jail inspections after the insurance debacle, then we had some information given to the state that was inaccurate, or as far as waiting on the county, the county had never received any communication. So are we getting communication with maintenance when the lift needs to be there at this point?
The lift is there in our Sallyport right now. It's been there for a while, six months at least.
I think what the chair is asking is that when there are maintenance concerns that need to, we need to get on them, how about the communication?
There is communication, because if we send it into the state that it's being communicated, and I think when I asked the question, it was five months later, four months later, and there'd been no communication based on what our county maintenance folks were saying. So I want to make sure that communication's there, one. And at that time, which has now been about a year and a half, I can't remember timeframes, that was two years ago, year and a half ago, I think it was two years ago, there was some talk of maintenance basically rolling under our maintenance department. Where are we on that?
To be honest with you, I can't tell. I know when Commissioner Powell was here at the time, he was heading that up, and from our discussions, I think that it was, felt that we just couldn't mix the two together at the time.
So we had made plans for maintenance to come out and do a walkthrough with our maintenance man, Mr. Wilson, before the inspection. However, the inspector showed up early, so they actually came out after the inspection.
And that was scheduled with the county maintenance?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hall.
Captain Brown, the LED, you said you've got three quotes. Do we have a schedule for when those could be installed?
No, sir.
Any anticipation, a month, two months, three months, if you had to guess?
If I had to guess, I'm gonna say within a month.
Okay. So if we said two, 60 days, it'd be very conservative. Okay.
Sheriff or captain, whichever one, Dan? I guess the basic question, pardon my English, would it be more better to do what the chairman suggested with maintenance or keep it as it is?
Well, we actually tried it with maintenance, but it didn't work out. The issue is, we don't know when the inspector is going to show up. So the plan was for to have maintenance to come out and do a walkthrough before inspection, but we don't know when he's-
I'm just suggesting, your opinion, your professional opinion, which way would it, what's the best way to do it? I know you can't always count on when the inspector's going to show up. Sometimes we're just not lucky.
I honestly think we don't need to do that, but I'm not the one to make that decision.
We're willing, we're willing to work with what works best, and if we need to do a coordinated effort with county mates, we could, we'll work that, we'll work it out.
We'll put that question off, but it's your opinion that I was asking about.
Yes, sir.
What, um, I mean, you may not know the exact day they're showing up, but you got a general idea within a couple of week timeframe, right?
So basically, we're just waiting to purchase the bulbs.
No, I'm talking about as far as when the inspector shows up. It's every six months.
We know they come every six months, okay? However, at the time of the last inspection, they were down to one inspector and the supervisor, and he was tasked with doing 97 jails, and he showed up early. I don't fault him for that.
And we were on a planned schedule for that conversation on the maintenance with the county.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Rounds, if you kind of explain the rounds and during the, any discrepancy on there because we know there are, but can you go ahead and explain that process, what was going on at that time of the inspection?
All right. So when the inspector comes, he asks for 24 hours of rounds on two separate days. This particular day, he asked for 24 rounds, 24 hours of rounds for three pods. He chose F pod, E pod, and the dorm. Looking at the report, you see, I don't have it in front of me, but you see a couple for F pod, I believe it was. They were a couple of late rounds for F pod. It's a little misleading if you don't know what you're looking at. I'm gonna explain it to you. The rounds are buttons. So there was two buttons that were missed, not two rounds, if you understand.
They miss swiping the buttons electronically?
Right, right. So if it was a round miss-
Mr. Chair, real quickly, are we talking about the E pod that has 119 minute gaps? You have three instances, 118, 119 minutes.
So you see E pod, run tag two.
And then one run tag two, right. Two of them are run tag one, and one is one run tag two.
Correct. So that would be two buttons. There should have been, how many buttons are in E pod? There should have been seven.
Mr. Chair.
Just for clarity for the public, could you explain what you mean when you say button?
Electronic tags.
We have electronic tags set outside of, not quite every door, but like at the beginning of the pod, middle of the pod, and the end of the pod, and the officer run. They do a round by touching that tag with our device.
So, so when you say that they missed the button, were they able to gain access without touching the button, or what do you, what do you mean, missed the button?
So let's say I've got, in this instance, E pod, run one, tag one, two, and three, okay? I hit tag one, then I go down to the middle of the pod and hit tag two. Someone stops me and say, hey, I didn't get a jumpsuit last night. I get pulled away from that and go and do a, say, get their jumpsuit. Now I'm late for run tag three.
And if one you, one minute off, you're off.
Well, they give you a 20-minute window though, right? 10 minutes on each side of, okay?
Correct.
All right.
This is one officer making rounds, okay?
Well, but it's not just a one minute off, you're off. I mean, they give you a 20-
I understand. I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain-
Yes, sir.
As far as the, that report goes, I'm trying to tell you so you understand. It's not a round missed, it's a button missed. For that particular E pod, for instance, they were at 99% that day. I'm not going to kill my officer for 1%, okay? No one's perfect. We're going to miss a round.
Well, we strive for 100%.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that I understand what you're saying. So when you say that you hit two buttons, didn't hit the third button, so are you saying you're inside of the pod-
Correct.
During this time, even if you didn't hit the third button?
Correct, correct.
So you're in the process of doing the round, even if you didn't hit the button? Is that what you're saying?
So, yes, so it's possible to actually make a round and be laid on the button and get wrote up for a late round.
Right. Even if you're inside doing the round, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Only late for a tag or button.
Thank you, Captain Brown, for the clarification.
I'm, I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm still confused. So there are seven tags, let's say, and let's say if he's at the first button, he gets interrupted, he goes and corrects whatever, and then he comes back and instead of going to tag two, he went to tag three and then carried on. Is that what you're saying happened, or something of that nature?
I can't explain it, okay? I just know, looking at that report, I'm like, where are the other buttons? If we're laid on these two, why are the other ones not laid?
So the other, the other ones at that time were within tolerance?
Correct.
Okay. That, that's what I was unclear on. Thank you.
And just go back, E pod was at 99, I'm sorry. Yes, E pod was at 99%. Dorm was at 97, and F pod was at 91. 91% in F pod is really good because now they've got 15-minute rounds on top of the 30-minute rounds, and they have-
Because, because, 15-minute rounds because?
Of inmates on suicide watch.
Okay.
We got 10 buttons in F pod, so they're hitting more buttons more often, and they got 91% on time. Once again, I can't beat my officers up for 9%.
Well-
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
You, you said that you have a 15-minute round on top of a 30-minute round.
Correct.
Is that, can you explain that?
So 15-minute rounds will be someone that's on suicide watch. Four times an hour, irregular basis, not to exceed 20 minutes.
Is there buttons you, you must do at the suicide watch?
Correct. And then we have a regular round, which is everyone else. That's going to be twice an hour on an irregular basis, not to exceed 40 minutes.
Is that typically the same officer?
Yes.
Trying to make all the rounds?
Yes.
So if I can, Clyde, I mean, we just had a settlement, Clyde. As far as what they're indicating in, in the rounds that they're mentioning and the percentages, I know we just settled a case, and the primary thing that you reported to us was not making rounds, and it cost, the settlement was $750,000 plus expenses. So how does that, as far as that case, how does that correlate with the percentages that we're hearing tonight?
The percentages have greatly improved.
Okay.
I said that. Said our rounds is doing all that.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, but need us some clarity. Yeah, because of that settlement, and I mean, the missing rounds in the past has been a costly thing, not just financially, but for families, and so-
And we're cognizant of that. We're cognizant of that, and that's why we strive for 100%. If I may proceed on, we're painting. We're painting cells when population allows. Explain to, because we've talked about this before, trying to get some of this paint and cover the paint, but with, with, with manpower issues and strengths, constraints that we have, the population, jail population, explain that, why the painting is kind of erratic.
Yes. So a lot of times, our, every cell has somebody in it, and it's pretty impossible to paint a cell with someone in it. It'll need, after you paint it, it needs drying time, and then we can put someone else in that cell. So that's the issue we're running into right now, is that there's just someone in every cell. We were able to paint all of E pod and a little over half of F pod. As you know, H pod is on hold because we're going to do the doors. We actually went to the jail administrator conference last month, and we actually purchased some graffiti cleaner. I'm going to try that and see if that can take care of the paint on the walls. So we're, we're working towards getting the walls clean.
And what I understand, the graffiti is not new. This is still the residual from what we discovered two years ago. Is that right?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
If I could, you, you mentioned the doors being redone. Since we brought that up, do you, we have a schedule for that at this point?
I have two quotes, trying to get a third. Issue is finding someone to come out and give us a quote.
We got to, we got to tell you this, trying to get quotes, when we had our roll-up gate at our Sallyport broke, it took months to try to get a vendor because they're just very liminal, people can do that. As you know, in construction, it's tough.
Sure.
But, well, we're on it. Food passes dirty. Explain that situation, and how do we fix that where we don't get wrote up for having dirty food passes? What was the situation on that day?
Okay, I'll explain why the food passes get dirty in the first place. Okay, we dropped the food pass.
Tell me what food pass is.
That's the slot in the door where we feed the inmates. We dropped the food, the food pass down, put their tray and their juice on the food pass. A lot of times, the inmate will knock their juice over. What happens, the way it gets cleaned, is we have someone, an inmate, come out every night, and one of their duties is to clean the food pass or the doors as well as the showers. So we have something in place. It just so happened that when the inspector come, it was after we had fed, and there was stuff on the door.
Time.
It, it happens.
Worn down paint on doors, handrails, and bunks, and we are painting, but explain where we're at on that. It's probably, probably similar to what you said other than dorms. Go ahead and explain that.
So once again, it's just someone in every cell. We have to have an empty cell in order to paint. We actually need a few empty cells in order to paint. Would be, it wouldn't be efficient to paint one cell and wait four hours to paint another.
Distinct-
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
On painting E pod, and you said you had part of F pod painted, what kind of timeframe does it take to paint a pod if you're having to move inmates around?
Well, E pod was a little different at that time because the numbers were low. We could double them up downstairs and paint. If I had to put a timeframe on it, I would say two, two days.
If you had the spaces.
If space is available.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Water-
Mr. Hall had a question.
I'm sorry.
I know at a prior meeting, Sheriff, you had mentioned the possibility of moving prisoners to another facility, but felt that was cost prohibitive.
Cost prohibitive. It's 48 in the pod, and it will be $4,800 a day, times transportation costs and everything else. If they had any medical issues, you add that up, and each day, some jails are 50, some jails are 100. And so the thing about it is, is anybody who would be willing to take on 48 of my inmates, most people would have jails saying, we're fooled.
Thank you for reiterating that tonight.
It's a tough situation. Yes, sir. Thank you. Good question, good question. Distinct odor in female segregation jail, segregation cell, female segregation area is cleaned on every shift and is cleaned twice a day. How's that managed?
Yes. So part of officer duties, you don't take on a, someone else's mess, basically. So day shift before they're cleared, by night shift, night shift makes sure that day shift has done everything they're supposed to do. And one of those things is make sure the segregation area in E pod is clean. Make sure that your officer station is clean. Make sure the master control is clean. Those are things that are done before you go home.
Water pressure, this is, this is always an important issue. Water pressure in the showers. Water pressure has been adjusted in showers. Tell them about the water, water pressure issues and what we're doing to make sure they stay cleaned, and also we have the proper water pressure for inmates.
So the day of the inspection, there was, I'm not a plumber, so I don't know the exact word, but there was something that regulates the pressure in the shower that was broken, some plastic piece that Wilson had to repair. It has been repaired. Pressure is where it should be. Showers are sprayed weekly by Mr. Kennon with a bleach solution to make sure that there's, they're clean. So he goes through, cleans the shower, scrubs them, and then at night, they're cleaned again by the inmates, or one of the inmates. That's it.
Mr. Chair, gentlemen, that's, that's all we have on our report.
Okay. Commissioner Hall, while, while we're here, I know when we toured the jail earlier this year, we looked down the plumbing chase, and you had mentioned that there were some upgrades planned for, for that. Can you, can you kind of give us an update on that?
Yes, sir. We had went with a company, or we were wanting to go with a company. I'll just say, I did a search, and I searched for, I can't remember the exact words, but it was to the effect of water management syst, electronic water management system, and the only company that I saw come up was the company that we got the quote from. So I called them, I was like, hey, are you all the only one that have this system? They said, oh, yes, we're the only ones. Come to find out, they're not the only ones. There is a company that has been installing the same system over at the juvenile detention center. We've been trying to get over there to see their system, haven't been able to get in touch with the guy to go. But I'm going to go see that system, and then I'll still need a third quote, but I don't know where that one's going to come from.
Is there a timeline we need to do these improvements, or a timeline that you can tell the commissioners that provide everything roles?
I guess we need to do it as soon as possible since it was in the budget, but-
But it's budgeted?
Right.
Okay.
But that's the, had to submit out for bids on that contract, right?
Correct.
So where are they as far as that? I know they, and what he mentioned, he got some information that he was led to believe they were a sole provider, but they were not. So where are we on bidding that out?
Well, I think you, so you got another bid. He required three unless it is sole source, and he found out it wasn't sole source. So once they find a third party to provide us a quote, then, then we can go with it, but can't go until it-
There's also rules as far as if you can't find three, and Clyde can help them with that. So I, I wouldn't just sit there and wait for a third necessarily. You need to work with legal department.
Absolutely.
And, yes, sir.
With construction, I know generally if you have a bid opening and you only have one or two bids, then you can re-advertise, and if you only get one or two bids, that time you can open. So maybe in something like this.
We're working in conjunction with legal.
Thank you.
We'll make that.
Thank you.
Like you had one bid and then you looked for another one, but I don't, I don't, it sounds like you had one contact and looked for another one, but that's not necessarily complying with law and the open bid process. So please contact legal so that we can get it straight.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have one more question. Captain Brown, if you could clarify for me. I couldn't tell the distinction in the pod with the 91% that also includes the suicide watch. Could you explain the buttons, as you said? How many of the buttons were missed for the general versus the suicide watch?
So they were all together. I don't, I don't separate them. I count them all together. So in F-Pod, for instance, I count their 15-minute rounds with their 30-minute rounds.
And when the state is checking the inspections, they count it the same way. They don't distinguish between a suicide watch miss and a regular population miss?
Right.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And as far as staffing, what are we doing as far as recruitment?
We are recruiters. We have the area festivals. We're there. If there's a job fair, we have someone at the job fair. We also use NeoGov. I get applicants off of there. I call them.
And can we start sending somebody to NC Works? I believe we had a job fair, what was it, about three months ago? Guilford County had somebody there and we did not and it's .4 miles from the sheriff's office. I mean, it's right next to the Wentworth Town Hall.
We will search out whoever.
Yes, and I mean, there were two people hired from that job fair in adult corrections. So, and then October the 9th, I don't know, I know there was a local government job fair there as well. So there are job fairs within walking distance and please send somebody.
And I think it'd be safe to say in every festival and every job fair we're aware of, we seek them out. We seek good applicants and again, but we'll take note of what you said and we certainly appreciate that suggestion.
All right, yes, sir, Commissioner Richardson.
Captain Brown, what's the minimum credential that a person, for a person to be considered for employment within the jail?
I'm going to let Mr. Stokes speak on that. He's my background.
Mr. Stokes does all our backgrounds.
So yeah, the sheriff was kind of sent me through background investigator school. There's a number of things that you have to do. One, you cannot be a convicted felon, ever, period. I think that one's pretty self-evident. Two, no violent misdemeanors in the last seven years or any other misdemeanors of any kind. Three, no DUIs within the last, I think it's 13 years or something to that effect. No domestic violence charges, any kind of 50Bs, anything of that nature anywhere on your record. You have to have a valid driver's license. You have to have, whether it's from Virginia, because we do have a couple of people that have applied from Virginia, we're honoring those. I mean, it's right across the border. You have to have a high school diploma. If you were a veteran, you have to have a DD 214 that shows as to, you know, why you got out of the military, make sure everything was honorable there. And then from there, it just goes into your standard background check. As a, for instance, if, say we had somebody apply that used to work at a different sheriff's office. Okay, we're going to start raising questions, go, all right, why do you no longer work there? We're going to go look at your personnel file from there. That's one of the things I have to do. And you run through everything they have. You have to have five people who are not immediately related to you. So second cousins, fine, but mom and dad, sister, those don't count, who are good personal references who can vouch for you personally. And then we have to contact your previous employers to make sure, you know, you weren't somebody that we wouldn't want on our team.
Yeah, obviously, the background check is, it sounds like it's very thorough and it should be. I'm more interested in what sort of training do you have to do before you can turn them loose on Captain Brown's floor?
So North Carolina regulations require us to send somebody to jail school, which is basically DLET light, solely focused on detention officers. But we have to send them within a year of their hiring. There are counties who can afford, such as Guilford County and Alamance County, that will sometimes send people before they ever start working. Most of the time, you end up, in smaller agencies like us, you go through what we call an FTO program, Field Training Officer. You're going to be paired with a senior officer who's been there that we know and trust. They understand the job, they know that, you know, they can handle the job and do it safely. And you'll spend your first however long with them. We try not to dictate a particular time because some people, it may take them less time to understand the job and feel comfortable, some people it may take more. Generally, when I'm speaking to applicants, what I tell you is, it's going to be highly unlikely that you're going to be out of FTO within the first, you know, two or three weeks, but by a month in, if you're high speed and you're doing what you're supposed to, we may start letting you in some of the lower tier pods by yourself. If six months in, you're still in FTO, okay, let's have a conversation. Let's figure out, you know, what's going wrong? What are we not teaching you? You know, is this the job for you? And generally, we know within a.
I got you. I'm trying to save you some time. So you do the training internally, is what you're telling me?
Correct, yes, sir.
So there's no way we could help you by getting you outside training because it could at best save you a few weeks?
At most, yes, sir.
That's good. That's what I needed to know.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Next, Ms. Melissa Joyce, update on the Phil Berger Fire Department grants. Good evening.
I'd like to give you an update on where we're at with the Phil Berger Volunteer Fire Department grant. These funds were made possible because of the leadership position in service of Senator Phil Berger and Representative Reese Perdell assisted with the passing of that in the House to ensure these funds came here to our county. Rockingham County is the only county to receive these grant funds that were earmarked specifically for volunteer fire departments. The total amount of the grant funds that were received for Rockingham County Volunteer Fire Departments was $700,000. Since we've received the money during our time period of the application process, the committee meeting, that money has earned an interest of approximately $7,500. That interest money was put right back into the grant money. So you'll see at the bottom of your, you should have received a sheet like this. You'll see at the bottom of that, that's why it reflects more than $700,000. It reflects the interest money that was earned, that all that went to the fire departments as well. This grant was designed to assist volunteer fire departments financially with essential equipment, safety-related items and small capital projects. The goal was to support departments in maintaining operational efficiency and firefighter safety. Just to let you know, there were some eligibility requirements that they had to meet with this grant program. Being a Rockingham County Volunteer Department or having primary district here in Rockingham County, they had to submit quotes with the application for what they were requesting and they could not submit quotes to get reimbursed for something that they had already paid for. This was for funds going forward. They were provided with a list of some of the items that they could request, but this list was not limited to being the only thing they could request. And some examples of that were turnout gear, radios, fire equipment, SCBAs, which is self-contained breathing apparatus, is the air packs that they use going inside of structural firefighting and doing overhaul, cancer prevention-related items and small capital projects that would be under $25,000. Now, there was a list of items that they would not, that would not be eligible for this grant and this list was also not all-inclusive. The committee reserved the right to refuse something if they felt like it was not appropriate for it. Some of the examples of some of the things that would not be covered would be construction of like a new building, constructing a building, purchasing fire apparatus, purchasing fire department vehicles, purchasing large equipment, staffing pay, event funding or payments on existing debt that the fire departments may have. They had an application deadline of July the 31st. We received applications from 16 departments. The application was simple and the fire departments did have to answer two key questions on the application. Those questions were, why is this funding critical for your department and what will the grant be used for? They requested to be very specific with their answers because that in turn would help the committee with making the determination of where the money was best fit, best, where the money would best fit the best, the largest need. The committee met in late September, reviewed all the applications for funding, justifications and was awarded the funds on the spreadsheet that you have received. I'm here tonight to request that you approve these funds as the committee has awarded so that we can notify the departments and send those funds to them.
Gentlemen, do y'all have any questions? Melissa, at this point, I know I want to just point out a couple of things. One, we certainly had more requested than we had money and we had three departments that did not submit a request for any grant funding.
That's correct.
So, you know, those three departments were Mayadan, Madison and Huntsville did not submit a request.
That's correct.
So anybody want to know why they didn't get any money in those three? It's because they didn't submit anything. But we certainly met and tried to narrow this thing down as good as we could. And also, one of the things that we decided to stress was, we've got some departments that are just, I guess you can say, have a more financial hardship than some others.
Yes.
And we tried to give a little bit more to those departments and try to help them as much as we can. Anything you want to add about that? I appreciate, you know, you and Lance and the time that you've put into this, but.
Yeah, we do, we have departments that are, they're faced with challenges and the committee has discussed some of the options and we've spoken with county manager, things that we can look at going forward to hopefully make that situation better for them.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kell.
For the public, could you explain like what maybe some of the hardships was for some of the fire departments they had?
So some of the fire departments, they don't, they don't have as much tax revenue because we have a department within our county that has to share revenue from another department. So when that department was established, there was a percentage that this fire department gets of the entire tax base for these two departments together. So we have one that gets like, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number, but it's either 72 or 74% of what the tax base is and then the other department gets the 24, 26%.
Thank you.
And we looked at the option of potentially increasing a tax rate for them because they've not increased their fire tax rate, but if they do, it's not going to benefit them because of the fact that, you know, they're going to be losing part of it anyway.
So most of the hardships that you, is tax base related or is there hardships over equipment or?
Tax base related because there's just not any funding. We have a department that is, their entire district is in our county and their budget is $42,768.
Wow.
And there's not a lot of commercial business. There may be some mom and pop commercial businesses in their district, but it's just not there.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hall.
Thank you and the staff and everybody who worked on this. You know, $707,000, that's a lot of, a lot of help. I know it may not be enough for some, but we appreciate you working on it. We appreciate all those who made application and those who've made decisions. So thank you guys for your efforts on this.
You're welcome. We appreciate the, our senator and House representatives going after the money for us.
Yeah, and everybody that submitted was, is receiving some funding, but again, we, some have a bigger tax base and, I mean, but they still got, got some funding, so.
We would have loved to have the money to be able to fulfill everything for everybody. We really would have.
That's definitely. Do we have a motion, gentlemen?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the appropriation, second by Commissioner Barrow. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Rodney Cates, second quarter funding Madison, Madison-Rockingham Rescue Squad. Make sure I say it right.
We were here in March with our budget meeting that we had with County. We were here at that time and we discussed the funding for Madison-Rockingham Rescue. It was decided at that point by the board to continue to fund them and revisit their funding at the end of the first quarter, look at what their actions were and move forward at the first quarter as the board deemed necessary. During this time period, myself, the county manager, Steve Bowes and Mickey Silvers have met. One of the requirements is that they provide some training documentation of what their training records were for their members. Steve Bowes did produce that in the meeting, a quite extensive list of their training. I have since checked with the finance department, actually last week, and verified their financial statements in regards to the rescue squad itself are all turned in and up to date. Convoy reports, we have never talked about convoy reports or the financial side from the convo aspect. The convalescent transports, that's never been a problem. We've never requested a documentation, so it's never come into play with this funding. One of the requests they had was to replace some of their command staff. I think Lance received a email, actually first of October, where they have replaced three members of their command staff. That was effective on September the 18th. We have been very transparent in email conversations with their chief of our concerns that these improvements took 18 months to get started, but at this point, we do report that improvements are being made and some of the recommendations, not all of them, and some of them are timely processes, but some of the recommendations that have been made by the county and/or their board when all of this transaction started back in '24 are underway and we're seeing some positive change at this point.
Commissioner Richardson.
We've been concerned about this, especially some of us from the western part of the county for some time and I think there's, there's been a lot of conversation about it, but the bottom line is, in your opinion, are those issues resolved?
They're not resolved. They're in.
Process.
Process of resolution, but I would not say they're resolved.
Well.
But that's no discredit to them. I mean, there's, we all have issues that are not fully resolved, but they are starting the resolution process.
I'm looking for your recommendation before I recommend continuation of the funds.
I guess if they're not resolved at this point, has there been communication as to what the next steps are, any remaining steps so that, you know, I think ultimately the desire of the squad is to get back to where they were, I guess that was two years ago. So has there been that communication as to what those next steps are? Or if not, if we can make sure that communication and timeline is communicated to them?
Right, and in all honesty, there has not been a lot of communication and that's why I made the statement that we've been very transparent about our concerns that these improvements have taken 18 months. There's not been a lot of traction. There was traction back in March when we had our budget meetings. There was traction three, four weeks ago when we knew this meeting was getting ready to occur. In between that, there's not been a lot of traction. That traction being, not been a lot of communication. They were told 18 months ago to replace their command staff or begin that process. That never went into effect until September the 18th. But transaction and traction's being made at this point. So to honestly tell you there's been ongoing communication for the last 18 months, there has not been, but when timelines are upon us, then communications is being made and action is being taken.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Barrett.
Mr. Cates, a conversation we had had previously was about upper level training with some of the command staff and my understanding is that some of them have completed the upper level training and some of them have scheduled it, but it's not offered all the time. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the, when Chief Stewart supplied us with the information on the new officers, he did let us know what their current certifications were. The big things we were looking for was ICS 300 and 400 and all but one, according to the documentation that he's provided, do have ICS 300 and 400.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
What would be a timeline to have them to where they need to be to be complied?
It's kind of like Commissioner Barrett just alluded to. Some of these classes are lengthy, some of these classes, not so much lengthy, they're hard to find. They're not always offered every week at every locale. So some of the process they have to go through are going to be lengthy, they're going to be timed. So I don't know, I don't know how you put a true timeline on it, but they are making positive steps at this point.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Hall. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
If we, if we continue to fund and we come back in another quarter, then what, what changes should we expect to see or what growth has been completed within the rescue squad for us to see that they're moving forward? moving forward and everything is going in the right direction?
I think for, from the emergency management standpoint, the number one thing is going to be collaboration with other departments. That was a request that has not been made, it's not been fully on their part, on their, at their fault. There have been trainings, they have invited other agencies to those trainings. Due to the nature of those trainings, departments have chosen not to go. There is a training coming up November the 25th. Some planning meetings have already occurred, they've been invited to the meetings, and again, everybody's not able to attend those meetings, but they will be invited to that training. We need to look at the collaboration. How does this partnership work? How do we work with each other moving forward? It's, it's, it's my goal to see them return to full operation, but it's got to be done effectively, efficiently, and it took a period of time to get to where we are, it's going to take a period of time to get back to where we need to be. And we need to see this new command staff working, working with everybody involved, continuing with that training, continuing with the mutual aid training and multi-department training so that we can see that we have a true partnership that works well together.
I, I agree. I mean, we, we do, we want them to be on the west side giving aid, and, and that's something I believe the county, the community, everybody deserves. But I, I agree, we, we need some leadership to show that they're growing, they're going in the right direction, so other agencies will want to be a part of it. And I mean, we need to, we need another, you know, we need to keep getting reports to show we're in the right direction.
They have also established a SOGs. I have a copy of them, I've reviewed them. At a 40,000 foot level, they look well. There's a few questions I may have on them, but overall, they will look well. They're pretty detailed. They address some of the issues that were occurring, specifically social media. There's a specific section on media relations in their new SOGs, so certainly some positive traction moving forward.
Mr. Cates, for the benefit of the public, could you express what SOGs means?
And, oh, right, Lance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, did you have something?
Well, I, I did. You've partially answered it. I guess my question is if, to tag team with Commissioner Callen, if we review this, let's say in a quarter, for, for the next rounds, you know, we can't expect them to be done based on what you said, but, you know, I guess we're looking for some mileposts or mile markers, if you will, to say, okay, give, give us some indicator of progress. I guess you guys or maybe your staff could work with them to come up with that, to, to let us know that, that they're moving towards this goal.
Mr. Chair. So, we've gotten, we received an email from the new chief that's going to be taking place, and he wants to set up a meeting with Mr. Cates and I, so we look forward to spending time with him and trying to address some of these issues.
Do we need any action, because I know it is that quarterly funding, are we good at this point with what we've already done in the past for that to continue?
You need to approve the continuation of this, this next quarter as well.
Okay. Gentlemen, can we have a motion to approve that?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Barrow, second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes. Thank you. I mean, they, they perform a very important service and, yeah, so, you know, please work with Mr. Cates and moving forward and hopefully we can get everything resolved.
Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Thank you. Next, I guess we'll hand it over to Lance. I believe we've got a resolution that we need to deal with as far as the 220 corridor.
Yes, and just to start off with this, this is, this is paramount because this begins the spokes turning for the upfitting of 220 to I-73. A lot of concerns out there about the accidents and about the condition it is in now, so we're excited about that as far as staff, and I know you all as well. Resolution of support regarding US 220 interstate study, whereas general statute 136-11.1 requires that the North Carolina Department of Transportation requests a resolution from all municipalities and counties affected by certain planned transportation products, projects to express their views on the project prior to any action taken by the Board of Transportation, whereas the department has proposed committing in excess of $2 million or preliminary engineering study to bring US 220 in Rockingham County to interstate standards, and whereas pursuant to that general statute that I just mentioned earlier, the county has provided with the boundary, excuse me, the opportunities to state its view on the project through this resolution before the action of the board, and whereas the department and the board shall consider, but all, but all not be bound by the views of the county regarding the project. Now therefore, the Rockingham County Commissioners resolve Section 1. The county supports the project because it will enhance the safety of the traveling public on 220 and request the department and the, and the board approve the project. And Section 2, the resolution shall be effective upon adoption.
Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you. Have any comments or any questions of Lance at this point? Commissioner Richardson?
Well, if there are questions, I'd like for them to go ahead because I have a comment to...
I'm good.
Okay.
I, I'm very interested in this, not just because I live in the western part of the county, but because this area has been of known concern for a long time. We knew about the increase in population, the number of houses being built, and over the last six or seven years, there have been a number of fatalities, the most recent one about seven weeks ago, eight weeks ago, and it involved a local guy that was a fireman in, in the Huntsville Fire Department. Tragic loss of, of a citizen and a public servant at the time. And I wish to address it, Mr. Chair, because I've been involved with it heavily there with DOT, and DOT, quite frankly, was anxious to help with this issue. They were very aware of the, not just the safety aspects, though they, they are critical and they're at the top of the list, but the efficient handling of traffic in that area. So, I expressed my concerns to our legislative body. And my concern, most of you don't know what the RPO, that's Regional Planning Organization, and I sit on that, representing this county and the region for that, and we're always looking to establish priorities that meet the criteria of enhancing public safety and efficiency of traffic movement. And for about six, seven years, have not been able to make any progress, but with the help of our legislature, and it was a phone call to Senator Berger that made him additionally aware, he's been watching this for some years himself. And so, when funds became available and were suitable to be transferred for this project, he has done so, and that money's now in the hand of DOT, and following this resolution, we expect the engineering planning to commence in short order. And I look forward to sometime in the not-too-distant future, or perhaps having Mr. Wright Archer from Division 7 here to explain their progress and give us an update. And so, I would be pleased, Mr. Chair, if the time is right, to move that we approve this resolution and to thank those legislative leaders that helped us get it.
Well, thank you, and so, we've got a motion by Commissioner Richardson. I just want to let, make sure that people know that this is the engineering part of this, and there are several phases before you actually see any earth-moving equipment, which will be a few years down the road, to say the least, but the engineering aspect has to be step one, and it takes a good amount of time with everything they've got to shift and determine as far as, you know, access roads and, and that sort of thing, so...
Mr. Chair.
We do have, yes, sir.
I, I appreciate that, and I know there's a motion on, on the floor, although it's not seconded, but I would like to take a moment to recognize Commissioner Richardson for his work on the board and other boards that, that benefit Rockingham County. So, Commissioner, thank you for your efforts that benefit this community.
Yes.
With that, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a second to that motion.
So, we got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Richardson wanted to say something.
Well, thank you for your very nice comments, but this was an obvious problem that needed to be... But in answer to a question that I've already received, we don't know exactly how much it's going to cost, but it's going to require significant funding, significant federal funds. So, as you mentioned, we do not know the timing on it, and we don't know the exact design, but we're anticipating perhaps as much as a $300 million project. And so, if you look at the fact that this is $2 million, you'd say that seems a lot of money for just the planning, but it's the beginning of a much bigger project. So, my apologies, but that answer will come down the road somewhere.
And, and finding the money became more difficult with the hurricane in the western part of the state because there was so much to deal with there and working things out with the federal government, so it just took a little bit of time. But, so we got a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. New business.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Callen.
Yes, Commissioner Richardson, thank you on the resolution there and the work you do. So, thank you from, from me. Also, would like to recognize and thank the Madison Rescue Squad for coming out tonight, showing your support. I look forward to you growing, getting back to where things need to be. I'm there if you need, reach out. I also would like to thank all those who come out to support with the Sheriff's Department tonight as well, and I'd like to also reach out and thank the Boy Scout troop. I know you're in Bethany, I think there was another one in Bethany, it used to be Troop 730, which I used to be a member of, so I'm fond of the Boy Scouts, so glad you're here, glad to see there's still a lot of participation. And with that, I'm done, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I appreciate everyone coming tonight, we appreciate the officers, sheriffs, folks that, that came. We appreciate that. Just want to remind them that, again, this year, this board has increased that budget about $2.5 million, and that includes $454,000 in salaries and benefits that were raised. So, you know, we do support law enforcement, we appreciate the job that, that those folks do. We want to give the public every opportunity to know what's going on. I know transparency is, is a, a word that we hear a lot, and so, we think we need to give everyone the opportunity to be transparent. So, with that, I'd also like to appreciate the rescue squad for being here tonight. Thank you, guys. We're happy to continue funding you. We look forward to seeing continued progress towards the goals that have been set. We appreciate that. Troop 103, thank you, folks, for being here tonight. We appreciate it. I know Halloween's right around the corner, so watch out for goblins as you travel the roads next weekend. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, it seems like it was a Western Rockingham sort of night with the rescue squad and the Boy Scouts and a number of interested people that I, I recognize. Great to have you there, and we appreciate the, the folks listening on TV and Louis showing up. As usual, I'd like to recognize one of the staff that works for you, Lance, and that's Ms. Angel White, who is our environmental health supervisor. And she doesn't get much notoriety or positive support or even recognition until she has to deny a permit, but it's important to the entire health of the county to have that department working efficiently and catching those things that are hazardous. Angel has been doing that. She actually worked, started work here in 1999. She had a gap in service, but she's been back with since 2009, and she's been a loyal and efficient worker. So, many thanks to Angel White. She sets a good example for all to follow.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start by recognizing the elected officials we had with us tonight, which was Sheriff Sam Page. I would like to again thank Troop 103 for sitting through this meeting. We know that they can get long, so I hope you guys had a good time. Thank you again to the rescue squad for joining us tonight. We appreciate you being here. I would also like to continue my plea for help with our foster children. We still have almost 170 kids in our care right now and still only have about 10 families that are licensed through the county. We will have an information session coming up. We're partnering with Osborne Baptist Church in Eden on November the 13th at 6:00 PM. If you are interested or if you know anyone through a civic organization or through church that you think would be a good candidate or have any interest, we beg, please, we need help, these kids need help, we need foster families. So, anything you could do to help us would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, to the Boy Scout troop, thank you for coming out. Haven't seen a single one of you yawn yet, so I guess we've been somewhat, you've been very attentive and we appreciate you being here. And the rescue squad, we appreciate everything that you do and look forward to continuing to work to get everything back to, to what it was a couple of years ago. And Commissioner Hall pointed out that we have continued to increase funding for the sheriff's office. There's been some misleading, at best, statements made, you know, trying to divert what's really going on. What, what we've had, you know, we got noticed about losing insurance, and that was an extremely costly thing for the taxpayers. Once that occurred, because every time we had events that occurred, we were given reasons. We would check on things, we were told this is good, this, everything's here, and then the insurance happened, so we started asking questions. And as we've asked questions, then there's been an attempt by a couple of folks to paint that in an incorrect way. So, you know, we've, we've got a duty to look after the taxpayer, and when that insurance amount went up, about $190,000, and the deductible went up, you know, so out-of-pocket expense went up from $10,000 to $200,000, we didn't know that was coming. Well, when we started looking, we started noticing a number of things, and as we've continued to look, we continue to notice things. And, and so, we did just have this case that was settled that had to do with the very things that show up in the jail inspection report, and it's good to hear, you know, that hey, it was two buttons that was missed, because that was the primary thing in that settlement was missing rounds. So, you know, we're going to continue to try to right that ship, and when I say right the ship, that is not any sort of negative comment on any of the officers. They are there doing the best that they can, but we've got to make sure that we do all we can to protect your pockets and to make sure that the people that are there are protected. So, that will continue regardless of what narrative some people try to push. With that, our next meeting is November the 3rd at 6:30 here at the governmental center. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some of you.
Motion by Commissioner Barrow, second by Commissioner Callen. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.